He believes remote work hurts morale. He also would not rule out layoffs. When we come back here tonight, the big night in Boston, fighting for survival.
Soreadic arthritis made my joints stiff, sore, painful. Emerged tramfiat. Tramfiat is approved to help.
When he's in town, so I'm just gonna check it out.
What type of bike is that?
E-bikes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll be able to climb up the, I'm up the hills around here.
There you go. That's what it does. Takes all the pain out of the uphills.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome.
So I have my other bike here, but I'm gonna find another home for that one.
Yeah, cuz you're, you're pretty, you've, you've done a lot of biking.
I've done a lot of biking, but I'm not in, I'm not in great shape to be climbing a lot of hills, so the E-bike's gonna help me a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I should be in recorded now.
When the printer stops printing 100 pages, if I can get some notes out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'll do right now.
Well.
Oh, no.
Packets burning off, right?
I thought I stopped that print job.
Maybe I can do it from here.
That's all right.
That's okay.
Hello.
Hey, guys. How's it going?
Captain Mike Captain.
That's right.
All right, cool. We're in business.
Did you hear that?
RV got pulled?
Yes, which is.
Yeah, I was like, oh, so.
It's okay. I think this U-Haul one's gonna be kind of intense, too. So we'll see.
Let me see that the applicant for the RV park was phoned?
Yeah.
Can we next session or?
I don't know. It has something to do with their, like, how, like, their exits, because they have two entrances, but not two designated exits. So they have to figure out how they're gonna put in that lot, and that's gonna be that. It's gonna be a little challenging.
Oh.
We're wait, we're waiting, right?
Has to be set up so that one of those is an exit only, neither entrance will be?
I think so, but if they're gonna do that, you have to, I feel like you'd have to, I guess, I don't know. But I don't know if RV parks have to have two exits. Maybe they have to have two entrances, two exits. Or create a larger space for a turnaround or something like that.
Sure, we'll learn all about that in the.
Yeah.
Staff report.
Next. Right.
How are you doing, Cody?
I'm good. I am. It's funny, I, you know. We all know what the market's doing.
It's so crazy.
Yeah, well, it's slowing down a lot, but, you know, there'll be days where I have. Oh, really? Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I have.
No, a few weeks ago, I was really, but lately?
Started getting a little bump again, huh?
Yeah, I mean, since interest rates have gone up, I've had way more.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Um, I've just had a lot of, let's just say this, I've had more free time, and a lot of times I'll just kind of be like hanging. You know, nothing, you know, free days, free calendar, you know, whatever, here and there. Nothing going on, and then, then the days when you have something going on at 5:30, it seems like everyone wants to do something at 5:00 and 6:00. It's just like.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, it's just funny, man.
Yeah. Or the weekends when you go and camping.
Yeah, yeah, that too.
All of a sudden, yeah.
Everybody wants showings and.
Still, still waiting, right? Come on, man, where's this thing start?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm trying to find. You actually printed everything out?
Uh, no, I had them print that for me. But yes, because I, if I need to refer to something, like, it was just taken, like.
Yeah.
You get it.
The, um, the index should be active.
In the PDF?
Yeah, on the PDF.
Right.
Clickable index. Boom there. Ah, okay, it's page 70.
Got it.
Yeah. That's it.
I can't get it, mom.
Hey, Paula.
Yes?
Sorry, it's, as the meeting started.
We're waiting for the last commissioner to connect, having.
I can barely hear you, but it sounds like you said no.
It has not started yet.
Okay. It, it is a bit better, yeah.
I have a squeaky voice.
We're waiting for one of our commissioners to connect.
Got it, okay.
He's not in town tonight. She says it's telling her it is wrong. She can't get in. It's telling her it's wrong, so.
I could probably shoot her the email.
The end of the. You sent your invitation? Over there, she can click on it?
Suppose, yeah. B. Let's see.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello?
There she is.
Oh, oh, my God.
Good, good evening, Maria, Commissioner Penya. Thank you for joining us. We're now, we have enough members here. We have a quorum chair to get the meeting started.
Great, we'll get this started. All right. I, I call this meeting to order. The date is June 16th, 2022. Paul, will you please do the roll call?
Charlie Apuricio is absent. Cody Cornet.
Here.
Philip Mosher.
Here.
Maria Penya.
Here.
Mark Popoff.
Here.
Portella is absent.
Okay, excellent. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
It looks much better than doesn't do.
It does, yeah. Approval of the agenda. I would elect to move the, staff comments, project updates, and commissioner comments, questions, items eight and nine to the end of the meeting after the quasi judicial public hearings, just in an effort to save time. Do I need to make a motion to, or just vote to approve that change?
Go ahead with the consensus.
Okay. Okay, do we all, I motion to, yes, approve the agenda with that, with those changes, you know?
Oh, I.
Yes.
I, I do still need motion and a second.
Oh.
Don't have to do two of them.
Okay, got it. Okay, I motion, I motion to approve the agenda with modified changes making items eight and nine at the end of the meeting.
I second. Go ahead.
I third. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Election of Vice Chair, are you really?
Do that next meeting, Chair, if that's.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, we don't have enough people to do that. Um, approval of minutes from the May 19th meeting, would anyone care to? Motion to approve those minutes, please?
I wasn't there. Oh, yeah, right. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the May 19th meeting.
I second the motion to approve the minutes from the May 19th meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Aye. Excuse me, Mosher, are you abstaining?
Yes, I'm abstaining.
Why not Commissioner Popoff? Speak up for us.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All good? Okay. Now's the time for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not later appear in the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. So if there's anyone in the public that does not wish to comment on the RV park, which is actually being removed from the agenda, because that applicant withdrew.
Yeah, Chair, just for clarification, I think I've been able to catch most people as they entered the room, but if there's anyone in the room that is here only for the RV park hearing, that hearing has been postponed by the applicant, and we don't have a date for the reschedule, but once we do receive it, we'll send out a new notice to everyone who's provided comment or received notice prior. So those of you that don't want to stay for the next hearing, which is the U-Haul conditional use, you're free to go.
Excellent. Do we have anyone in the public that would care to pay comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, excellent. Let's get into this quasi judicial public hearing. Now's the time specified for the plan commission to conduct a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider the following matter: consideration of conditional use permit.
Yes.
To. Jack, would you mind muting yourself? Thank you. Consideration of contention of conditional use permit 202-22, which requests a major modification of conditional use permit 195-20, a previously approved storage facility and truck trailer rental business for the addition of six exterior storage units in the existing parking lot of the subject property. The substantive criteria upon which the planning commissioner will basis decision in this matter are found in the Dazza Municipal Code, Title 10, Land Use and Development. Article 3.050, conditional use permits, Article 5.060, CG, General Commercial District, Chapter 10.6, General Regulations, Chapter 10.7, Parking Standards, and Chapter 10.10, Improvements Required with Development. A public hearing is required by law and certain rules apply. First and foremost, you must be recognized by the chair in order to speak and present testimony. When recognized by the chair, please proceed to the microphone and state your name and mailing address for the record. The hearing is required by law to be recorded. Generally, generally, the public hearing procedure is as follows. Prior to the public hearing, a determination will be made of the qualifications of the commission members and a law for challenges from the audience. I will open the public hearing with the staff report. The purpose of the staff report is to further identify the applicable criteria of the case being considered and to provide background information about the case. After the staff report, we will hear testimony from the proponents, those in favor of the application. Next, there will be testimony from the opponents, those not in favor of the application. Next, there will be testimony from anyone else who wishes to offer testimony or ask questions. Then, to honor the right rebuttal, we will again hear from those in favor of the application. To expedite the hearing, the commission members may ask questions of persons as they testify. When this process has been concluded, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. During the hearing, some important standards apply. First of all, those who testify must hold their testimony to the decision of the criteria, or excuse me, must hold their testimony to the decision criteria. As in all land use hearings, there are a complete set of rules, procedures, and criteria we must follow. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission members and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Third, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with details specific enough to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in the circuit court. Fourth, prior to the conclusion of the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, the law states the commission must grant the request by either continuing the hearing to a time and date at least seven days from the date of the initial hearing, or the record must be kept open for a period of at least seven days. These are the rules. Are there any questions? All right. Have any members of the commission had any experte contacts, conflicts, interests, or bias which would prevent you from rendering an impartial decision on this matter? Commissioner Popoff?
No.
Commissioner Mashur?
No.
And Commissioner Penya, I heard a no?
Nope.
Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of any members of the commission? Okay, nope. The public hearing is now open. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Commissioners. Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Give me one second here. I forgot the rules of being in the public meeting here, so I need to log into Zoom before I can share my screen, but we're doing that momentarily here. And then, thank you, everyone that showed up, that provided comments about the, uh, the previous item that, that was postponed. As Alice mentioned, it was a, it was a last minute postponement, so I do want to let everybody out there that provided comment that logged in. Appreciate, appreciate showing up. All right, so, item on the agenda this evening, conditional use permit 20, 202-22, the conditional use permit for U-Haul's minor modification to a previously approved conditional use permit 195-20. Uh, that was approved in 2020, May of 2020, I believe. Um, the site address is 2640 West Sixth Street, um, its own general commercial, and as many of you may know, this is the site of the former Kmart. They have in operation now for, yeah, about two years, and, um, they've changed the facade to the front of the building. Quite a big difference to what it was before. Um, we are here in front of you today to discuss, uh, the proposal to add six exterior storage units to the existing parking lot. Uh, this is the subject property, uh, corner, pretty much the corner of Snipes and West Sixth Street. It is located in, um, basically a shopping center here, and there is six other parcels connected to this, KFC, Sixth Street Station, Columbia Herbals, Columbia River Herbals. There's a strip mall with multiple different businesses in there, as well as coastal. Uh, so a little bit of a project timeline on this. It's been a, you know, kind of a few years in the making to where we're at today. Originally, there was a conditional use permit that was approved in January of 2019. This ultimately expired due to inactivity on the application on the permit. Uh, the conditional use permit 195-20, um, that is which approved the site, uh, May 7th, 2020. Uh, there were some building permits, uh, building permit that followed, um, approved on December 7th. That was for tenant improvements, basically improvements to the interior. Uh, there is also, at the same time, construction of, um, outdoor storage units. Ultimately, there was a stop work order issued due to the fact that that was not, outdoor storage units were not included in the original conditional use permit 195-20. They resubmitted, uh, the applicants resubmitted, uh, to have those outdoor storage units, uh, conditional use permit 197-21. Uh, that was void after 181 days of incompleteness, and that's the state ordinance. And then, conditional use permit 202-22 is what's under review today. Also, there's, uh, multiple sign permits out there for all the different signage that they have. Uh, the proposal here, um, the plan, um, six exterior storage units. Um, three ADA drive approaches will be installed here. Also, some ADA connections from the right-of-way to the business entrances. Uh, there's quite a bit, those black areas you see are the darker areas. Those are all the new landscaping. Landscaping bays that are at the end of, uh, different parking clusters, and then also, uh, reconfiguration of the parking lot. Uh, this is the building. Um, what it looks like, this is a rendering, but it's, this is how it looks today, and you could see in that bottom corner, um, the old Kmart facade. These are the storage units that are being proposed. Um, since the staff report was sent out, um, staff did receive two comments. Those have been sent out. We sent those comments to the applicant requesting the applicant respond. The applicants did respond. All that correspondence has been provided to you. Um, the staff will address. Everything based in, um, code-based criteria is addressed only in this staff report. Uh, so the main, um, requirements of a conditional use permit are looking at the impacts of a site. These two, these first two, uh, noise impacts as well as lighting impacts. Um, staff looked at, you know, this is a base, a modification to an exist or a, of, an existing functioning use. Uh, we do not see in any impact, any additional impacts coming from noise from these additional storage units. Lighting impacts, um, the applicants did provide a photometric plan. There's no new lights being proposed, but they are moving one light in the front of the building. There's no new lights being proposed, but they are moving one light in the front of the building. This will allow for loading and unloading, but that light will be located more than two hundred feet from the property line, so it should not shine on the right of way. But also both of these, something that you'll see with some of these other impact criteria is nuisances are always on a complaint basis. Dust and other particulate matter, number four, following odors. Basically, all three, four and five to get right to the point. Once again, there's an extension of an existing use, staff does not see an impact, any change in any of these from these new storage units. The transportation, there's six and seven here, seven's been crossed out just for the fact that it's not applicable. And for impact, I will jump into the next couple slides, but it's based off of the transportation system is capable or made capable of supporting the following or the additional transportation impacts generated by the use. Street designation and capacities, on-street parking impacts, bicycle safety and connectivity, pedestrian safety and connectivity, and then transit capacity and efficiency. So looking here at for traffic, traffic wise, this is a map from the two thousand seventeen Transportation System Plan. As you can see where the property is located by that star. And then all of the green dots are key intersections that were studied in the TSP. And green dots, this is a projection of two thousand thirty five showing that all of these intersections are below the applicable performance targets. Therefore, no mitigation is required for any of them, so staff determined there wouldn't be many impacts that would change the counts that would would alter these these intersections requiring any mitigation. The, due to the changing of the parking lot, quite a few parking spaces were removed. Obviously, due to the outdoor storage units, but also for the in the very front of the building, there's some unloading and loading areas. Can you see my, okay, here we go. So there's some loading areas right here. There's also these storage units. So what this did is there's, there's this, a shared easement that goes through here basically. And this, this allows a driveway for the use of this entire center. So ultimately, by putting loading areas here, it created a path that was altered slightly. And obviously some loss of parking over here, but what's being proposed now is, well, what came from this parking analysis? Were these numbers here and really what it shows is that in looking at all six parcels on the entire parking lot, the entire shared parking lot, five of the six uses meet or exceed their minimum maximum parking requirements. And these are numbers based off of what they are proposing, not currently what's there. So even in the loss of parking from these storage units and the reconfiguration, these numbers would still meet. The Sixth Street Station, which is a new food car pot out there, is actually deficient in parking spaces. But this proposal, U-Haul, is proposing twenty-four shared parking spaces, so therefore and located adjacent to the Sixth Street Station, therefore it's able to compensate for that deficiency. Ultimately, meaning that all six of these uses would meet or exceed their minimum parking maximum. In a sense that maximum exceeds here, basically the, the KFC and the Columbia Herbals. They have parking lots that their uses actually don't need as many parking spaces, but ultimately they are providing more than than they need. The proposal, looking again, you know, talking about the pedestrian connectivity. There, talked about these, these three ADA, this, this is huge. This is, you know, something that obviously the city of the Dows is needing to improve many of our ADA ramps, just like so many other cities in the state. So this will allow this use here, one of the conditions of approval will be installing three ADA ramps along Snipe Street. And then also some connections from the right of way, those are little red lines, you can see, those are striping for pedestrians to get into the entrances of the building. So that kind of wraps up the, the impacts of the, the traffic impacts and obviously there's more in this, you know, more site specific information I'm more than happy to talk about. If there's any questions, but at this point, like to jump into the commission's alternatives. And the recommendation would be that the planning commission move to adopt resolution PC six zero four dash two two approving the conditional use permit two zero two 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 zero two dash two two with the proposed conditions of approval that are included with the staff report. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
I'm not sure yet. Do you have one? Go ahead.
So in looking at the comments, there's a couple of things that jump out. One, there's several comments about this development being in violation of the, of the development CCNRs. Could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, so those, the two comments that were received were centered around CCNR. So they, there is CCNRs that were established when the subdivision was established about in the early nineties. And although there's common area defined, which is a, a parking area is defined as common area. The city does not enforce CCNRs. So that is something that is not part of the Dallas Municipal Code criteria. And we have no say in whether or not there's a violation of CCNRs.
That's for the HOA or whatever that's called.
It would be a civil matter. Yep.
And then it also mentions that the proposed development is in direct violation. What was the other one? Of the municipal code. Could you speak to that? Are there points where it's in direct violation with municipal code?
That was the only, they didn't expand on that comment, so without citing a certain section of the code for us to look into, staff would say the answer is no. But unless there's findings that they can provide to us saying it is in violation, we would be more than happy to look into that.
I have a question about the, the net amount of parking spaces that are all shared within these six properties. Is that if the storage units that are there but proposed to be cited within, within a formal application, those parking spaces, that's enough for that whole area, correct?
It is, yeah. So the total amount of parking spaces that were calculated, as you all know, there's the types of use, the type of use is based off of your, your parking ratio. And this being a warehousing use, mini storage use, it has a very low parking ratio, but we did take, it's a total of ninety-six thousand square feet, I believe, which is the building itself plus all the storage units. And then we calculated that total and it came up with the fact they were only required to provide fifty-eight parking spaces. So there's fifty-eight U-Haul parking spaces provided, twenty-four parking spaces provided shared parking spaces, which I mentioned are over by the Sixth Street Station. And then some of the parking spaces that they have, I think it's one hundred and eleven are for shunting. And shunting is a term that the U-Haul company uses. And this is for the parking of their vehicles so people can come and go, you know, drop off equipment, you know, park it back in this area. So in all that configuration, they still, they met their requirements and by still removing all the parking that they did.
Okay, I think my question is, and let me know if I'm just off here. So these six shared properties is there, and I know that there's property lines across these, this area of concern are this, the subject area. Let's say do the other six properties have a claim? Or to those spaces that are being eliminated? Like, is to say, does coastal, for instance, are the parking spaces that are being eliminated, does coastal have a claim as part of their permit? Or if they were to reapply for something else, like let's say coastal was to expand, would, are we taking space away from coastal or one of those other businesses? By allowing the storage units? Like, are we eliminating possible space? If one of those other buildings wanted to expand, since this is all kind of this common area that people are talking about?
So ultimately, it is ultimately removing space, but the, the parameters of this common space area is defined within their CCNRs. So the applicant would need to answer questions based around any violations associated with CCNRs. The city of the Dows would not make a decision based on anything included in the CCNRs.
So we're kind of in between?
You could say that.
Between the space, okay.
To follow up on the shunting, so the shunting is kind of a storage transitionary vehicles in and out.
Yep.
Is that, the, the other comment that I saw a couple of times is that U-Haul has continued to attempt limiting access to parking on that portion of the common use parking area. And I think that comes up a couple of times. Is that what that's referring to, or do you know what that's referring to?
I'm not too entirely sure what that is referring to. Yeah.
So hopefully we'll hear from some of the people here today.
Yep, hopefully, yep.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the staff?
No, not this time.
Commissioner Pena, do you have any step questions regarding the staffers' report specifically for Josh?
iPad two, I think.
I think it's that five four one number.
Commissioner Pena, do you have any questions? Well, I guess if we're hearing none, then the answer is no.
Continue. We can still ask questions of the staff report as we get into public testimony, correct? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, just want to make sure, because I think I'm still crafting some. Let's move on to testimony, if that's okay, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, those in favor of the application will provide testimony. Does anyone wish to test, or excuse me, does anyone wish to testify in favor of the application? If so, let's orderly. Yo, we need to hear from the applicant first, I'm sorry. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address and sorry.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Doug Green. Address is four oh one one Southeast Rizley Avenue, Milwaukee, nine seven two six seven. I work for U-Haul Company, I'm the owner's representative. I've been with U-Haul Company thirty-seven years. I'd like to talk about a little bit about our outside storage units that we like to build. I'd like to amend our conditional use permit for. We find out that the drive-in up storage, mini storage units are a lot of our customers like them, some of the first ones that we fill up. A lot of contractors, landscapers, cleaning companies, they like to get in early because we offer twenty-four hour access. That's what we'd like to build there. As Josh said earlier, I'm the ones who fill out the applications during COVID time. And I, my understanding was that they were included. They went from the city, they went to county, county gave us permits for each of the buildings. I got permits and we started building. I got a phone call from the city telling me, no, you can't be building, we, we stopped the next day. Locks on them and they're, they've sat there that way ever since until right now. That's why they are where they are right now.
Okay.
We're trying to do the right thing, you know, and I thought I was doing the right thing. I, we, we've hired a local engineering firm, Tennyson, who put all these plans together and everything else. They're here for any other questions you might have if I'm unable to answer.
Okay. I don't think I have any, anything specific in regards to in regards to the findings or the staff report for you, I don't. Commissioner Mashur?
Have you already been in conversation with the development about the violations of CCNR?
Have I?
Your party.
That's our party, yes.
Is that something that can be quickly and easily explained just for context for us?
I don't have an answer for it.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Smith from Timmons Law. Can you hear me? And my address is eighteen forty-two Rebecca Avenue, Hood River, Oregon. And Timmons Law represents U-Haul here in the Dows and we are aware of the objections from Pomona Street and Mr. Brock. And we have been working diligently with Pomona Street about these objections. And actually, I think we just reached a resolution out in the hallway right now as to those objections. And unless Mr. McEwen, who is the owner of Pomona Street, says differently, and he's here, he's agreed to withdraw his objection.
Okay. And just for clarification, Pomona Street is being represented by Marcus Swift?
That's correct. Mr. Swift is, is counsel for Pomona Street.
Okay.
Happy to address anything else right now, but I think other people have more relevant things to say.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I don't have any specific questions for you beyond that.
Okay, thank you. And then could you also address the statement that U-Haul has been infringing on parking? Or let me see what the exact wording was. Continue, removing common use parking. Has, has and continues to attempt limiting access to parking on that portion of the common use parking area. Do you know what they mean by that?
I don't, unless maybe our customers, they do what's called a night drop. And they'll drop the key off, drop the truck off, and they put it in the wrong spot or something. That's the only thing that I could think would, would happen. Because we have our shunting areas, we park the trucks in that they, customers come and go with them, right? Great. Another thing too is with a shunting area, what we try to do is bring it as close to the showroom as we can. Because it's less travel for the customer, they'll get the vehicle, you know, so that's about the only thing I know.
All right. I'm Darren Ekman with Tennyson Engineering, three seven seven five crates way of the Dows, representing U-Haul. I just wanted to add a few points or clarification, it sounds like parking is, is kind of one of the issues. And recognize that both coastal and U-Haul both are really the only parties within the parking lot that are required to have shared parking or common area parking. In this case, both of their parking lots exceed the city required ratios. And in fact, with the exception of the, of the Sixth Street Station, the other three tenants within the, the shopping center, they require about fifty-three spaces between the, the three of them, and they actually provide ninety. So almost double the amount that's required. With regards to the shunting areas that Doug spoke to, the number of shunting areas is based upon the maximum number of units within the U-Haul fleet. Oftentimes, there's only going to be twenty to thirty percent of those shunting spaces taken by U-Haul vehicles.
Okay.
For available for any questions the commission may have. I should add that we're completely agree with the staff recommendation and conditions that are being proposed.
Okay, noted. Commissioner pop off any?
No, I don't have any questions.
All good? Okay, Commissioner Pena, do you have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Penia, do you have any questions? Thank you. Yeah, I, I think we're all set, guys.
Thanks.
Okay. Now that we've heard from the applicant, does anyone wish to testify and? Does anyone wish to testify in favor of the application? Okay. Does anyone wish to testify in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward and state your name and address.
Scott McEwen, ten seventeen C, Pomona Street West, the Dells, nine seven oh five eight. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Sixth Street Station and, uh, council is correct. I understand that what we discussed is that U-Haul is going to apply for one less row of two sides of parking.
Okay.
That's the parking lot, less than they had originally applied for. And that would alleviate the parking concerns that, uh, that, uh, Pomona Street has. And additionally, I think we've solved consideration matter, the, uh, uh, CCNRs issue.
Okay.
So based on that, so did I correctly represent, uh, the understanding? Okay, based on, uh, on that presentation, U-Haul is going to apply for one less row of the storage units. Pomona Street, uh, withdraws its objection, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No.
All right, excellent.
Hello.
Yeah.
All right, is there anyone else in the physical audience that would care to testify in opposition to the application? Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would care to testify in opposition to the application?
Can I speak up?
Yes.
So for some clarification on my end, moving forward with this, there will be some modifications needed to the site plan. So I want to clarify, is there s- only four storage units being proposed now? One, what, what's the one less row?
Row F, shunting row F.
Oh, shunting, okay.
The storage units will remain the same, sorry for speaking from back here.
I'm sorry.
But shunting row F will be converted back to parking spaces.
Okay, yeah, so then we'll just need to see those modifications and we'll, and numbers.
Okay, excellent. Does anyone wish to testify, does anyone wish to testify that are not in favor, opposition, or they would like to ask questions? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Does anyone on the Zoom call care to ask questions not in favor of the or in opposition to the application? Okay. Do commissioners feel as if they've had enough information to make a decision?
Uh, yes, I think so, so Norm Brock, was he just speaking for himself, or was he speaking for a business?
He owns, uh, or, yeah, Columbia Herbals.
Oh, I see. But he's not here today.
He's not?
Yeah.
All good then?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you feel you have enough?
Yeah, I think so.
Commissioner Penia, do you have enough information to make a decision? Okay. 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 Are you guys ready for deliberations then? Yeah, okay. Public hearing is now closed. I what are your overall thoughts on this deliberation wise?
Uh, I don't see any objections to, you know, they're putting up, uh, the storage units. Actually, as far as that goes, you know, Coastal has a hay barn on part of their parking and, um, also the storage of their inventory. So I, I don't see anything really out of, uh, you know, out of scale with what, uh, U-Haul is proposing.
Okay, Commissioner Penia, do you have any thoughts, exclamations? Deliberation materi, deliberation material? Okay, I don't have any outstanding thoughts on this, it all seems pretty straightforward. And I think a lot of the, um, external elements that were kind of making this a little bit more challenging, regardless of whether they're relevant to the findings of the staff report or not, uh, seem to have been eliminated, which is nice. So that kind of just frees up my brain to think about this a little more clearly, I have, I have nothing to say or add.
You asked Commissioner Penia to speak up again because she's asking if we can hear her and I just said no, so.
Uh, Commissioner Penia, do you have any thoughts, comments? We can't hear you.
She used the chat, maybe?
Okay. Chat is disabled.
According to our city attorney, um, we just need a vote, a majority vote of the, those present, she's present.
Okay.
And, um, we just need a majority of the four of you.
Okay.
For, for this to be, to work.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that, um, the work, uh, in getting the different parties together has been done before this meeting. That's, that's very helpful, so, uh, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, is the commission ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, and if so, would anyone care to make a motion?
Then you gotta do all those numbers and stuff, you go.
Okay, uh, I have motioned the planning commission move to adopt resolution PC six zero four dash two two approving conditional use permit number two zero two dash two two with proposed conditions of approval, approval included with this report based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the agenda staff report.
I'll second it.
That has been motioned and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Are we getting an aye from?
I'm waiting, um, I asked her, so she can't, the, the sound isn't coming through, she says yes, she approves.
Okay, got it, so that's four yeses, and now we need to vote on this. Where is the verbiage to approve this resolution? Or do we just say it again?
The resolution. Okay, um, Chair, the resolution is in the packet, so that could be the next item and the.
Take it off of the agenda, just move to approve resolution six zero four dash two two, approval of CUP two oh two dash two two, hall of the Dells.
Okay, thanks Paula. I make a motion to approve resolution PC six zero four dash two two, approval of CUP two zero dash two two, U-Haul of the Dells.
Second.
All in favor of approving resolution PC six zero four dash two two? Raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All not in favor, say nay. Commissioner?
She's a, she's a guest vote.
Okay, so that, and that's a majority anyway, so that has been resolved. And now, with that being closed, uh, we are on to staff comments and project updates.
Chair, thank you for, for, um, all of the gymnastics.
Paper shuffling back here.
I really, yeah, I really appreciate your patience with us to, tonight and, um, and just ready and, um, as always, we're, we've been talking to the mayor about getting our final vacancy on the planning commission filled so that we can ensure that we have more chance of having a, um, a quorum in the meetings. So that has been a challenge for us. Um, I did check in with all of you, we had Paula check in with all of you earlier today about your, uh, ability to be present at a July seventh meeting. And I haven't talked to my, uh, the person on the left side of me yet. But, uh, we do have that density code that we've been talking about bringing forward. And so it's a question of whether, um, we can schedule it for that date or the second meeting in July. But since we know we have a quorum, it may be that we'll get that prepped so that we can get that, um, scheduled for the me, first meeting in July. And then maybe we can cancel the second meeting and we can enjoy our summer. So I don't know if we have any pending public hearings for the second meeting in July at this time, I don't think so. So, but in the, in any event, we'll keep you posted and, um, Chair, did you want to say anything more about attendance and anything else?
Sure, um, you know, the, the only way that public meetings like this work is when people show up. So if you don't show up, we aren't doing, it doesn't work. And people depend on us, you know, staff does their job, the applicants do their job and going through the proper processes. We have a job to do to be here and, um, complete that circle. So if we aren't, we are, we're failing a lot of people, so we need to be here. I would say that if you can't meet that obligation, we should have a conversation.
Right, and what would be helpful to me, Commissioner Popoff, is I, we really need to be able to get a hold of you so that we can confirm your ability to be here. Uh, we heard from you today at noon and I don't mean to embarrass you, but it's been tough trying to reach you sometimes, you don't, we, we don't have the traditional methods of reaching you. So, um, we just would appreciate hearing back, um, more responsively on your ability to attend. So we know if we have a quorum, because we were going to cancel if we didn't hear from you by noon today, so thank you.
Would it help if I, I called in on, on Monday? Cause quite often I go up to my vacation place earlier in the week and there's no phone there, so.
Please, and you're, would welcome you to just, as soon as you get the packet, let us know if you can attend.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, just, uh, call, um, or, you know, we, we're email, I don't know if you have email, but, um, we just like to be able to, to reach people in a more instantaneous way and without voicemail and some of those other tools, it's really difficult. So, um, what else, uh, projects? We approved, uh, some incentives for our urban renewal area. And I may have mentioned that at the last meeting, we have likely to have, um, in August or September, have a, a hearing for a conditional use in the downtown, uh, for a request to have a building taller than fifty-five feet. So, um, and that's exciting, that will include several new multifamily dwelling units in our downtown on Third Street. So stay tuned for that.
In the Tonys' spot, or?
No, it'll be on another property. And I'll be ready to tell you more about it when it's, when it's more public, but, um, but it's, the plans are.
How tall it is altogether, or what they're asking?
The proposal is, uh, sixty feet, where fifty-five feet is the maximum. And it's, it's a, uh, a conditional use permit for that kind of height variation. So we'll be bringing that forward for your review and it'll be a it'll be a four-story, five-story, five-story and several new dwelling units in our downtown. So it'll be, in terms of creating a neighborhood in our downtown, it'll be a game changer. And there will be a lot more people walking around and interested in accessing services, um, that are available in our downtown and maybe more demand. And as some of you may have heard, I don't remember if I mentioned it at our last meeting, we've had interest from a natural food grocer in locating in our downtown in a, in a large vacant building. And so that is, been told that that's on its way to, uh, getting a loan approved and closing on the property. So we'll find out more, I heard from someone, the Pioneer Building, that is at the northeast corner of Second in Washington is Inescrow, that one's been sold and there's a business owner, that person is from out of town, but they want to locate their business in, in, uh, the ground floor. And if there is a vacancy, if the, an area becomes vacant, then that will be, um, occupied with a new business in our town, town, a, a food business. And then, um, another food business, the natural food.
Where the, the optician is?
The, and there is interest in that building of creating where it was office space before, that's a really cool building upstairs. If you've ever been inside and creating some dwelling units up there, or maybe, um, short-term rental or something like that, hospitality units. So that could be really exciting. I understand, in fact, I know that the Honold Building changed hands and I don't, I haven't heard from that owner and know if there's any plans there, but that did, um, sell, so that, and then another property I learned today is in, in Inescrow, and that's the Medical Arts Building. And that's the one that is across, it used to be a hospital and.
Across from the art center.
Yeah, so it's Fourth, Fourth and Washington, it's right there on the northeast corner. So that one is in Inescrow and I haven't heard if there are any new businesses, I don't, don't assume this means that it will, um, any, any of the tenants will change or anything, I just, what it means is people are interested and people are investing in our downtown. And with the, um, I've heard from ten different property owners, and one of them might be in the audience, who are interested in renovating their buildings, updating their buildings, adding new square footage to their buildings. We have a brownfield grant that we've had for now about two years out of three or four. And, um, what that has done is it's opened up opportunities in our downtown. Most of the properties that are in part of this grant, and we are as in the Urban Renewal Agency, we put the Tonys into this, Tony's property into this program. It's allowed for some of the environmental cleanup issues that have been a barrier to investment to be taken care of through this grant. And also opened up for the Tony's building, opened up the potential for us to receive some more money. We've been told we're in line to receive two hundred and fifty thousand at least, um, on that building to assist in the demolition and the asbestos abatement on that property. So it's exciting time and stay, stay, stay tuned, you'll have a lot of hearings coming up on these buildings and these projects.
You mentioned the Honold Building, is that, uh, Lilo's and Studio Fit?
Yeah, that's correct. And in, you may have noticed that the apothecary downtown business that was in that building has relocated to the, um, Todd Carpenter's, the former wrecked building, um, which is right between the Last Stop and Granada Theater space. So that's a new retailer and some of the existing tenants in the Lilo's space, in that Lilo's building have occupied. So that, that space is already filled, um, in the, the vacancy that was left by the apothecary is already filled. So stay tuned, am I missing anything that I should mention here?
How many commercial spaces do we have vacant in the, in the core downtown? Do you, do you happen to know that?
We did a count a couple of months ago, but I bet it's out of date now, so I, I wouldn't hazard to guess. I don't remember, that's why I didn't.
You are more than ten.
I don't know, yeah, I don't, I didn't bring that with me, but.
Any commissioner comments, questions, things like that?
Oh, actually, I do have a comment about the street trees downtown, half of them are dead and the others are, are dying. Uh, you know, if we're not gonna take care of them, let's just take them out and give up on that idea. Maybe we should be putting trees in the residential area, we have to, you know, pay in, or at least in the downtown area, we're paying into the, uh, the, the, uh, development district anyway, and you get something out of it, like some, uh, street trees, which would be more appreciated there probably than there would be downtown.
Commissioner Popoff, thank you, um, you're not the only one that's made a comment about this. The few different things, the beautification committee, there's a mayor special committee that's been, uh, appointed to address these issues. And they have commented a lot about the street trees and would like to see more action on the city council with regard to that. And I know our new city manager, I don't know if he's still in the room, Matthew Cleaves, I know he's been asked by a variety of different groups to address this issue as well. So, um, it's definitely on everyone's radar and I'm thinking about it a lot as it relates to, uh, the First Street Project, that, that project, the streetscape between Union and Laughlin along First Street. And I know on that plan, that project, we will be putting in irrigation, which we don't have on Second Street. And then we will also have larger street tree wells and we'll also have a, um, that'll accommodate the trees a little bit better. And we'll also have a, um, different species that is more tolerant of this, um, climate that we have here. So those are all some considerations, but you make a good point, I think our downtown is looking a little, at times it looks pretty shabby and. So those are all some considerations, but you make a good point, I think our downtown is looking a little, at times it looks pretty shabby and it's, um, and you're not the only one making the comment, so. And I guess I want to, Chair, if you would, do you want to hear from our new city manager or am I putting him on the, on the spot?
Sure, sure, yeah.
I'm, I'm excited about Matthew Cleaves' arrival because he's really interested in what we do and both you as a commission, but also the planning staff. And I'm excited about, um, everything he brings to our city.
Thank you, Alice, I appreciate that and thank you for taking, uh, letting me take a couple minutes of your time to introduce myself, my name is Matthew Cleaves, I'm the new city manager. I know many of you already, or at least in passing, and, um, yeah, your, your points are well taken. I've had several conversations with the beautification committee, I've attended the Urban Renewal Agency where the topic has come up as well. And I'll be frank with you that it's, it's my own personal interest to, um, based on my background, where I used to do downtown revitalization work with the Dallas Main Street. The downtown street trees, uh, are a priority of mine and something that I'll be watching and looking into. And as Alice mentioned a moment ago, I'm very interested in, uh, the work that you do here and very appreciative of you volunteering your time to come in and help guide and, and contribute to our community. And so it's a real pleasure to be here tonight and, and see you all hard at work in this effort. And, um, I'll be endeavoring to drop in from time to time as often as I can and, and stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I also vote for more trees.
Perfect.
I'll start a fund to buy them.
Been moved and seconded, I think we should be good.
One, one of the topics that I will be discussing with Dale and Dave Anderson is, we have Third Street and with new development occurring on Third Street, what will that streetscape look like and how will we integrate the improvements that we have along the other Second Street and others? And how will we ensure that we have a nice streetscape on Third Street as well? Knowing that in, in all likelihood, at least for the life of this historic, uh, Urban Renewal District, we may not have enough money to do a full Third Street streetscape project, so. But with a, with a half block likely to develop along Third Street, we'll need to be thinking about how we want those sidewalks and so forth to finish, what those finishes should be looking like.
Fair at least, in, in a section of it, we do have some beautiful mature trees, so let's make sure that we keep those alive in, in these, when the new development happens.
Excellent. Do you have any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
I'm all good too. Meeting adjourned. Excellent. This is a lot, um, this is my first time doing this.